Right in these order. And for the process indication of what's the easiest indication to my mayor Bernard. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for your love and thank you for giving us. Ask you to guide us and give us the wisdom and see throughout the. Also ask you to basically protect our country from all issues that will be able to affect you throughout the world. We take care of the health of those who are children now that we have. So.
I pledge allegiance to the United Nations America, considering how important it stands, one nation, America, individual, diversity, and justice for all.
You see. Now, the court, please call the roll.
Yes, council member McGuire, council member McHirr, council member Taylor, you, Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. First up, we have minutes from January the tenth. We have a motion. Make a motion to go ahead to. Under item number three four. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any questions or comments on it? Great job. The number call roll.
Council member McGuire.
Yes.
Council member McHirr.
Yes.
Council member Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
At number five, we have first reading ordinance number oh one dash twenty point two. Orders to amend the city's data report for the citation form of. For enforcement provided for member of the city code subjects. Two S three fifty one, two S three fifty three, two S six sixty one. High definition and facility by procedures for enforcement, provide for plenty of classification to bounce, providing the appeal and complete warrants, provide for inclusion in the code, provide for scribbling, provide for several type of date. All right, is there a motion? I'll be happy. Before I do have a comment, I think. Save the people to the people who are going for some people out there. Hopefully this is a major difference to people made in the five like this. That's he had said, I'm going to do line number three five. Motion. Be files ordinance number oh one dash twenty twenty two. Is there a second?
I actually have a question before.
We need a second before the questions.
I'll say.
We have motion on second. What is your question?
Um, over on page three thirteen, no, it's like four thirteen. I don't remember B all the way to the bottom. I just need some clarification on maybe I'm reading it wrong, but um. It says that they'll get the citation and the person shop headed will reduce civil penalty. So are we going to find them and then?
The way this works under chapter one, it's due to the statutes of section part two. Is it's different in the normal kind of enforcement, it's fine with the special master trade that limits and it's a dairy fund that racks up over time. These are like a one, a shot. I think if you want to eat it every day, uh, because every day it's a set of violation. But the way this works is that we, 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 there's a time, the buyer's basically five, uh, two hundred fifty dollars the first against five hundred for a tax. What we will provide for is a list in the back of reduced penalties based on those ruined road vehicles. If you look at the matrix before those. Those are reduced penalties. So if you look at pace, uh, six and seven are thirteen, reduce civil penalty. That's what they can pay if they decide that they want to go again and not contest the, the citation and, uh, and that will be their fine. Uh, up to the fourth, uh, third time, which case they have to go to here and after that third, except for offenses. And the reason for that's, that's how the statute wants, wants it to be handled. But if they decide that they want to contest it, then they send us, they told us that they want to contest it, we send a court hearing and then the court, kind of court sets the path. Hopefully this is a fine higher than that, which is penalty, what we can, and what we do. And, uh, we just, you know, the, the, uh, a third enforcement, regular laws, a notice from representative city would say, you know, we are offering more opportunity to reduce the penalty fits. But, you know, uh, we ask, you know, the penalty be two hundred fifty dollars for first offense or five hundred dollars for additional offenses. And, uh, hopefully before we go to that.
Any other questions? None. We do have motion in a second. And now please call the roll.
Council member McGuire.
Yes.
Council member McHirr.
Yes.
Council member Taylor.
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
At number six, this is resolution number twenty two dash two and twenty two dash those three, we wish to continue discussion on this. I think these are the resolutions we decide within three to five. All right. Bobby, have anything to add before we move on?
No, I think you've, uh, you got everything you need to. Uh, either postpone or move forward.
Okay, very good. We said that we will postpone until attorney, the conversation, make sure everything's hammered out and bring back. All right, at number seven, we have discussion of D R C capacity fee calculations. Oh, yeah, so you mean that?
So at the January tenth council meeting, um, council asked staff to reach out to other municipalities, um, surrounding, the surrounding areas and do a comparison. I reached out to fourteen municipalities and counties in the surrounding areas and some that were like size. Okay, third page. Does capacity fee comparison landscape, um, the city of Bowling Green. Well, first of all, you can see all the cities that I contacted. A lot of them are. First of all, the Sebring, um, does have impact fees or tapping fees and for wastewater would be around eight thousand dollars. And water. Sixty eight hundred.
This is in the case of the laundry net.
Yeah, so if you, if you look all the way over to the far right hand corner, I've done calculation based on the laundry net and sun cure to give you guys an idea of how they compare to what. Calculated.
It's also true that they intend to do a study this year.
Correct.
This is something that they've held for a long time, hasn't been changed for a long time.
Several years.
Chances are it will be changing this year.
Correct. So for Sebring, it would be eight thousand for wastewater for the laundry net and for sun cure.
Uh, just as a matter of disclosure, also information to me, I, I'm sitting trying to bowling green and it's all this friends. Uh, I, I think you'll agree, uh, that's, that's set on the, the, uh, open records, I'm not saying the thing is, you know, uh, there's a couple of information. I think the city manager would prefer to see less capacity piece so we can get more commercial and, uh, because it feels like that's going to impact their ability to get, uh, commercial. Customers in. With the virus office friends, uh, I think it's a secret. Most of their treatment plan has been paid for with grant money, probably ninety percent. So their, their fees are lower than normal because like basically most of that is been paid for by plants and these are really playing. They base it, their numbers on, uh, which, which.
No.
Okay, so, uh, Cluiston, they have adjusted face rate eleven hundred thirty three for. Wastewater. And six hundred for water. That number for sun cure is incorrect. That should be eleven thirty four thousand. Um, I contacted White House Point and they contract out their water and wastewater, so I didn't want it further as that I didn't contact who they contract out. Um, Fremantle, Fremantle Dana Beach, they have general fund impact fees, but no enterprise fund impact fees. But they are also going out for a study.
Those weren't, those weren't, uh, counties that also they generally provide the cities with wastewater, those two one facilities. They got, they got the filter plant for free and so they offered free, uh, hookups by the cities and a lot of cities to pay for that back in the days.
Um, Pletka is their, uh, moratorium to their impact fees and they're also going out for a study. Lantana. So they're. They use E R U's and E R Cs. So if you look at the next page, there's calculation on how they calculate that. So their total wastewater fee for the laundry net will be nineteen thousand eight hundred eighty six and for sun cure it would be twenty nine thousand eight hundred and twenty nine dollars. Satellite Beach did not respond to my request. Orange City, um, they also do a calculation. Their laundry net wastewater fee would be ninety eight thousand nine hundred and fifty two and sun cure would be nine thousand nine hundred and seventy. Um, Goldsmar. They do a calculation also with E R U's and E R Cs. So laundry net would be twenty five thirty five and sun cure would be thirty eight oh three. The city of Davenport does not get back with me and the city of Davenport does a calculation with E R Cs. The laundry net will be one hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and seventy two dollars and sun cure seven thousand five hundred and eighty one.
All right. Any questions?
Your comments, obviously these raise a wall over the place.
Yes.
Really difficult to try to compare our city with public city for various reasons. You see the discussion point we had last time about, uh. Our rates are very some cities are higher end and that could be in turn for bringing new businesses to the city. But then again, I also have the same opinion, it might be increased in which we almost double them, that we still with this kind of, we wouldn't catch enough to find the main things. Sort of like the test twenty two here, do we try to, you know, maintain public service expenses, charge that way of property. Try to, you know, reconsider, go back to the old direction, try to bring, uh, business into the city. I do agree with the, I brought up last time, mayor, about the fact that, uh, you know, probably never going to get enough money even with the pace rate. Or not last year. So I'm thinking that maybe we should go back. For the time being, increase the older rate. I know that city attorney might not agree, but I was just throwing, throwing this out here that maybe if we went back to the older rate and say increased it by ten percent. For ten years. We have a, another study coming this year. And, you know, we can wait on that there. And, uh, I'm saying, I wouldn't have a problem if we increased the old rate somewhat. But the idea is that if we got to a point where we start to have to build a new plant, then obviously we're going to have to go back either way. I just think it's a difficult decision, like I said, that twenty two. And, uh, we got two businesses that want to open up now and, you know. I'd like to see them, you know, move forward with that. So I'm ready to listen to the sessions, so, so comment that the council has had.
Can you counsel the session?
Session, but I think you don't agree because. You all know they, by the way, somehow.
Well, I would certainly before going back to where it was at the start, uh, we do have a new rate study that's coming this year. Hopefully we can get a little bit more insight in that rate study. Uh, the last one that we had. Was a little bit vague. Uh, hopefully we can get something that's a little bit more pointed as to the true direction that the city needs to go to have a realistic plan of being able to build a new plant. I don't think that we're ever going to get enough, enough economic development to pay for it the way that we are currently looking to pay for it. So if we need to use alternative methods, we need to know what those are and what realistically we're going to be able to do in the next ten years, twenty years, whatever we think that we're going to do. Need to have plan A, plan B, and hopefully plan C as well.
This is not a seashore question, but really something you can think about is, um, why do you refund the additional fees that you've liked it since, uh, it hasn't been able to, the people that pay it. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying you have to, you know, just to say, there's some people that come back and say, and say, you know, uh, you shouldn't move it in the first place. You move it back and once you refund, you know, the difference.
Yeah, then I would just say no. Then I would just say no. You agreed to what the price was when it popped up.
Well, I just feel.
Sure.
So put a stop.
Realistically, are we aware of, uh, businesses that have connected during that time period? I think we have it spread out there for probably what, six, six months or so?
I can't think of it off the top of my head, but I can, um, get that information for you.
We've probably had some residential.
We've had residential for sure. Businesses, I don't recall any off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, um, so I would be more than happy to make a motion that we go back to the old rate and water, wastewater rates.
Can I ask a question?
Is there a second to that motion? We have motion in a second. Please go ahead.
I know, Mr. Burrow, you can't make the decision, but after the comparison.
You ask me my opinion? Uh. I don't want to put my head in the vice here, but, uh, but I, you know, you asked for my opinion, my opinion is you should treat the rates as they are because you already reduced them below what. The, uh, study recommended that they should be, uh, when it was done, it was, you know, quite a bit. Uh, and, you know, the, the theory is if they're not paid for by capacity fees, if your treatment pipe come in the future, then it's not paid for by, by, uh. These capacity fees as, you know, uh, over time or even a portion of it that's not paid for. Whatever is not paid for is going to be paid for out of utility rates first, and if that doesn't cover the bonds that you'll have to get when we build the plant. Uh, that then.
Or grant.
The general.
Or grant funds.
If you get grant money, then that's fine. Uh, you know, then you would have to, the bonds would have to be paid for by the taxpayers in general, not the people that are often in the total system. So I, I just, or that after, um, I don't, did we ask you? Sorry for the hand.
All right, any further discussion? The number call roll.
I have a question first.
No, go ahead.
When do we know when the next time is going to be done?
I have not got the information yet to, um, to start with, prepare and study. Um, so hopefully I'll get that information done next week.
Okay, I, I think it would be, uh, the decision, our partners, once the study gets done, then, you know, we advertise well in advance that we're going to discuss whether they're going to change the rates or not. So people that are in the process, maybe opening a business would have the option of doing it sooner than later, so that they would have, you know, maybe non-dates of. Be a, we're going to bring this up for discussion, that the rates could be increased. So I can't say that they weren't born, but maybe we should advertise newspapers for that, that, uh. Brought up to be fair, so you don't want some people coming in here and said, you know, I looked at mine something three months ago, I turned around and applied for it and I just found out that I forced a double in trouble. So I just, I'm a caution, I just, you know, don't suggest advertising for a long time.
I'm sure it will also be talked about on our local radio station.
Sure, I do. That's a good place to start. Maybe the newspaper.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
The number call roll.
Council member McGuire. Yes. Council member McHirr.
Yes.
Council member Taylor.
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Very much. At number eight, we have purpose of new fire department command vehicle chief. Here, brief some, what exactly is this going to do for?
All right, this is a, it's a phone vehicle that I would use. Early on, people, nine years old, ninety thousand miles on it, and it has four pumps, fuel pump problems, um, that is a, this is their words, a no problem, an unjung solution. But sometimes it just doesn't want to start. It's also an ignition problem when you're driving down the road, it's pretty rough and a little hard. Which is a little scary.
Problematic.
Yeah, this, this would be a purpose built vehicle.
Okay, so this was a budgeted item. Uh, looks like it did come in under budgets. Any other questions for the chief on this vehicle?
Just two questions, simple questions, uh, with comments you made about this vehicle, I assume they'll go, give that up for auction, the old one. It would seem so, but that's a, it's a, somebody who needs it. And a last question, I just want to know, why did we go to the Chevy Tahoe?
There's supply chain really is the answer. There's not a whole lot available at this point.
That's a beautiful, I guess, now that's a good answer.
Any other questions? There are motion?
Make a motion, two line number D eight, approval of Chevy five SUV. About fifty five thousand nine hundred and eight.
There's a second.
I'll say.
We have a motion in seconds. Any further questions? We know call the roll.
Council member McGuire.
Yes.
Council member McHirr.
Yes.
Council member Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. At number nine, we have the bicyclading restroom bids, market like tickets.
Sure. Um, as you know, especially new ones here, I don't know if they have the photos or not, but we went out to bid it, for the seed barn, which is the smaller two, that you approved the roof on the last meeting. And actually the roof is done, this is the bid to fix the bathrooms, which are a complete mess, there's all the water scat in, I stayed and actually bring up some photos ahead of them. When we went out to bid, we received four bids, um, they're listed in here on a bid tally. Our lowest bid was Quest Construction at fifty eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And this is something that we have to get done out there. Things that go before, it's been going on for years, and it's very patient with itself.
Okay, um, just simply ask staff, uh, what their recommendation of the selection is.
The, um. Obviously, we certainly always try to go with the low one, I will tell you, because I'm on the upfront here on it, as you can see, the references on the lowest one. With, um, he's here and sitting in the back, really there was none. And I know Jerry, I've discussed before him references on how much you can use them or not. But, um, as you'll see in here, they were just kind of places where he buys and supplies. And we've used, um, Quest Construction and passed on a demo, which got done, but it took several calls and it took quite a while to get it done and just want to pass it on.
Well, it'd be my recommendation that we, uh, that we go with, uh, Hinkleman Construction. It's a little bit more money, but the references are certainly more vast. After all, we are. Trying to bid on the lowest responsible bear.
I agree with that. Um, one reason being the other three contractors that submitted bids all have electricians listed and plumbers and subcontractors. Quest doesn't, but as far as I, and as far as I know, they don't hold an electrical license and their quote says that they will be installing new electrical wire.
And I also, oh, I'm sorry. I also noted that, I have that as a note here that there, in the specification, I put that in, that's your first thing, scope. There is electrical work and plumbing and I don't know if his electrician can do this, but he's not using any subcontractors, so I'm assuming he's doing it himself. Where all the others are using, um, plumbing company and electrical company, so.
Based, based on my knowledge, general contractor's license doesn't necessarily mean you have an electrical license.
No. Particularly in commercial circumstances. Jay, any other questions or comments?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question. So you said you was going with Hickelman, Hickelman because what?
Because of the references.
But I looked at the references and, and none of them really looked worth nothing. I mean, most of them, most of them, you didn't get a call back or nobody want to put their neck out and say that they did work for them. So what did you saw so special that I didn't see?
I would say it wasn't, uh, necessarily the, uh, the good of Hickelman, it was the bad of Quest and so in this. I'll defer questions.
Actually, can I?
Go ahead.
If, if you look at Hickelman, again, on my notes here, I've got the one from Pope County, B O C C, the county. And wonderful company that has completed several projects for Pope County in recent years. And then the next one, number, two of them didn't return the call, but the, the last one was a public supermarket. Said that, um, um, this construction company is one of the, uh, public's preferred, um, construction firms. I thought that was pretty good for public. So I think they got, they do have strong.
Is there a motion?
You see online?
Nice move. He said, thanks, my brother.
Is there a motion?
More questions, can I ask a question, more questions on people? Um, are we going to be faced with any additional costs because of the drawings they're expecting just right and, uh. You can't really correct Smith, the owner has provided these drawings, which.
So the, the drawings are going to go according to what the county inspector has asked for, so that will be the same across the board.
And should the existing waste then water lines are acceptable for reuse if they're not, or is that included in the bid also? Are we going to have to supply more lines?
I can't believe it's pointing and still we develop a truck.
I doubt it, but depending on what they run into, uh, there may be a change or.
Yes, that's one of the issues with the, the building being very old. Anybody's guess what kind of issue with the surface?
Um, I'm just simply said, I would ask whoever makes the motion with, um. Delayed award for a week so we can, uh, have our construction counter.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion and go ahead and do, uh, implement destruction, six two thousand thirty five dollars. There it goes, and. Instruction.
Yes. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I do have one question, discussion is, uh, since we just recently approved the, uh, roof repair, roof replacement. Depending on when they get the material, they said it could be months, a day, or they. You know, to the work, uh, we got to hold off on this project until the roof is done because we're getting nine days of quality in the rainy season. So if the roof isn't fixed and the bathroom is. We're asking what happens.
We, we will coordinate that when I can start.
Okay. All I needed to know, thank you.
Roof first. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further questions?
Mayor, if I may.
Please.
So that you guys are aware, um, these funds are not eligible under the.
Just so that you guys are aware, these funds are not eligible under the American Rescue Plan Act or the CRA funds. So they will allow the general fund user.
Anything else? We know, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. I remember seeing FAA Airport Rescue Grant Reimbursement.
Yes, we received notice from the FAA that we are eligible to receive thirty-two thousand dollars in airport rescue grant, which relates to the utility billings out there. And we can go back to twenty twenty, I believe. Today, we have sixteen thousand dollars that we can request reimbursement for right now. So they actually reached out to us and said we have the spots if you want.
Do we have any questions for Melody on this?
Before you make a motion, in order to sign my certificate, I need to point out that you all need to understand that funding is made available right within, they only need to use the cost related to operations, personnel, clean sanitation, janitorial services, and combating the spread of pathogens at the airport. For the honor after January twenty twenty, or for debt service payments that are due on or after March eleventh, two thousand twenty-one.
Melody, do these funds, these funds spent for that purpose?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion? Make a motion and go ahead and do it live enough. Is there a second? We have a motion in a second. Further questions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I remember eleven, finance department update.
So I just wanted to give an update on what's going on in the finance department. Right now, we are under engagement with firms and CPAs to perform the work for the audit. I've contacted him and sent him some preliminary information. Being that he's new, it's going to take him a while to get all of our information updated into his system. I met with John Davis, and he walked me through this year end process, so that should be pretty easy to follow. And he assured me that he and John will be available for whatever it means.
Awesome.
And I spoke to Clifton Larson, Alan, Julie, and we temporarily, this preliminary. We're going to start work in May or April. So that's the audit, but quarterly financial updates, which you all should be receiving. We're trying to wrap up the first quarter right now, so I'll bring that back to you the first meeting in February. I just wanted to let you know that budget revisions, intra departmental budget revisions can be made by the city manager, city manager's authority. So those are things that, one of the things that we're doing is we're tracking transportation and postage. So there's, a lot of the departments have no postage budgeted. So we're taking it from operating supplies and just moving it from that line to the other one. Any increases that you all made, like to might just approve through the, the bathrooms of this place, plastic titanium? We will go ahead and put that in and it will be updated. Staff, so we are currently seeking a finance analyst. That's been out since I applied for the job, so it's difficult to find somebody that's qualified. So we're working on that. We have one new hire in utility billing, and we're going to hire another one. We've got some applications out there that we're going to contact. So Beatrice, who was a big part of the utility department down there, is set to retire December of this year. So we have a new hire, Cody, who's down there, and she's picking up on what Beatrice does very well. So hopefully she'll be, you know, a shoe in for that position. Andy Mogul has been named the purchasing agent, so he's taking care of all of the bidding and all that for the city.
A new GM of G.
Karen Lackey, who was in the utility billing department, is now in public works doing the finances and helping the guys out there.
Actually, can I, actually, she's sitting at the airport, because we don't have anything else to up there. So she's sitting there until hopefully FAM gets up.
The utility billing department was, we've been behind on billing for quite some time. So we have been estimating the bills in order to get the billing caught up. So I don't know if you guys have heard out, how, how button the public that sometimes they, some residents got a double bill. Like they got billed twice in one month. That's just because we're catching up. So if anybody asks that. I've got Rick Reed on the Zoom. We, Rick Reed, Marnita English and myself, met with Tom Dublin from Avanti to look at getting some upgraded meters that will allow us to not have to send somebody out in the field to read meters. And they have agreed to supply us with a prototype of, you know, a couple hundred meters, so that we can see how that works. And you have any questions about that, Rick?
Top of here. Did they indicate what the new cost would be, would be much significantly higher?
They have not, they've got the new cellular out, and they've also got a mesh network that works off of existing infrastructure that we have and may require some infrastructure. They're working on, working on that right now to get us pricing.
Okay, Rick, is that the radio reads where you guys go down this, go down the street and you're few meters from the street? Or is that the type that your office can collect all the information from, from the office? Doesn't even.
That's good. That's looking at fist, fixed base, but right now, we're also talking to them about trying to get another laptop for the other vehicle and getting those upgraded, where their GPS laid, where the current system that we currently use, if you don't know the route, is, you know, you really can't send anybody out there. But if we get it GPS overlaid on the mapping system, you would be able to give the route basically to anybody to drive. But what we're looking forward to is going forward, I'm sorry, looking forward, going with the fixed base system, where the office wouldn't have to send anybody out, and they could talk to the person on, you know, live. And if a customer, if a customer had an issue, we would be able to send a meter reader out, and they would be able to use their iPhone, from what we're being told, to show the customer their system and what's going on.
Okay, thanks. Well, I guess let us know how it works out.
Okay. We'll keep it posted.
In the event that they do actually work in the like them, I would like, before we actually make a decision to go with them going forward, sometime of the cost analysis of what it used to cost us, for it to go out, the type of factors that were in tail with that versus how much easier and whether the different price of personnel we go forward.
Also, just so you know, that the new meters that we've been replacing won't have to be replaced, they'll work with just a radio. So as we're moving forward, replacing the dead meters and registers that are out there right now, when we do decide if we did, decide to move forward with this, the current meters wouldn't have to be replaced, it would only be the radio.
Excellent. Thank you, Rick.
Okay, so the next item is the new accounting software. So council budgeted in our five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to replace the software that we have. The software that we have right now is antiquated. And does not, it's not really user friendly. So any, anytime you want to get information from the system, you're literally twenty clicks to get one thing of information. So David and I did a webinar with the company that showed us their software and how user friendly it is. And that made us want to move faster about this project. So we're, in order for it to go into effect for twenty-two, twenty-three, it's going to take, what would you say, six to nine months to implement? So we're requesting to go out to bid the next thirty to sixty days to see what we can get and, you know, start on the process a little sooner.
Now, this with the, we're brand new software, not updated since.
Correct, brand new software.
Anything else?
Yeah, just a couple of other miscellaneous projects we've got going on. We're in the process of revamping the procurement policy and utility billing procedures. And I'm training, processing payroll, because Janine will be, you know, leading her out, so I'm going to work on that. And we have lots of grants that we're trying to track. So if you want me to go through all of these, I will.
If you can hit the highlight list.
Okay, so American Rescue Plan Act, we got three point six million. We've got the headworks and the wastewater master plan, which all go against those. The CBPG Fair Housing Grant, we had seven hundred and fifty thousand, it's only drawn down eighty grand so far. So that could be an audit finding. We've gathered all of the information and I will submit that, so that we'll draw it out, you know, what we've already expended. The FAA Airport Apron Rehab Planning Grant, it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand awarded. We've drawn down thirty-seven thousand of that. The Clean Water Safety Volving Fund, fifty percent forgivable loan is fifty thousand dollars. We have not drawn down anything on that yet. The DOT Small Communities Outreach Program, we have for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we've got sixty-nine thousand dollars to resurface Fred Conner Road. The smaller grants, we've got a, our insurance company gives a safety grant for five thousand dollars this year. We are using it for bunker here with the fire department. So we have grants that have not yet been awarded. We have applied for the CBPG Fire Station Parting Grant for eight hundred and ninety-four thousand, which includes a lot of, can read in there, a lot of stuff that's going to be updated outside and inside the fire department.
We haven't heard back on that.
No, we should know by the, by January twenty eighth. So I'll follow up, I'll let you know. The CBPG, the drinking water, if drinking, distribution system and drinking water facility infrastructure upgrades, we applied for six hundred and seventy thousand of that, for that. And we should know by the end of January of that one, also whether we've got it. The Florida House Bill forty-seven, forty-five, Airport Infrastructure Improvements, total requested eighteen point five million. This was actually part of a grant that we did with FAM, federal grant for the Build Back Better, which the Build Back Better did not pass. So this was the state portion of the, the amount that we requested, and that's been carried forward. So we'll, I'm not sure when we're going to hear from that, about that. The FAA Airport Rescue Grant, we just passed that tonight. We also have a Firehouse Subs Grant for eight thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars that will be used to purchase a forcible entry door prop. And we also have another DOT Small Communities Outreach Program Grant for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. We don't know how much that's going to be, the deadline is March twelfth, and we're working on deciding what we're going to spend that much, what we're going to request.
Luckily, it is my part of my firehouse subs grant.
Who is doing most of the grant writing?
The grant writing is either Guardian or Kimberly Moore.
Or, well, Carl fool's done some of the small ones for us to get brothers too. About the chief.
I was a part of the, part of the award, and the firehouse one, but it's. Melody, you have anything else?
I do not.
Melody, I thank you very much for the update. Very appreciated. Appreciate knowing what's going on with the report.
Thanks.
All right, Jerry. Recommendation to CDPG loan forgiveness request.
So I've got a contract from a law firm to evaluate the hip up aspects and your privacy concerns that like the wise with information that we're going to need or make decisions regarding CDPG stuff. I apologize, I've got that tonight and was requested today, I was pretty much out of the office by the last week, a week before. So anyway, it's, this law firm wants six hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Do, do the work, I'll find out how much they, they think of the cost, and you want to put a limit on how much you want to spend on that.
I would just defer to your judgment as to what you think is appropriate.
I just, well, I think a lawsuit for, I suppose, private, private information would be pretty big, but I, I, I'll talk with Mark as well. See if we can get that.
Do we have any other questions for Jerry on this?
I would just simply ask you to approve it to go ahead with the contract on this, if, if you decide to.
We have any other questions before we make much?
I will say this, we were trying to a very fine offer throughout the.
So you're looking for a motion to give you authority to seek the contract with law firms to come up, consultation. Is there a, there's a, I should move. Is there a second? We have a motion in a second, Jerry, if you like. No further questions, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do you want me to handle this special magistrate thing?
Yeah, exactly, I didn't give you one, and you were off, so.
So, of course, we want to request qualifications for a special magistrate, we lost our previous special magistrate. It's a standard contract we did before, but this is, the only person actually responded was Park Sullivan. I'll simply say that, you know, to me, that's, he's, he's highly qualified, he's seventy-four, he's got the temperament for it, and I think, and serving the knowledge. While we recommend to approve it, the one issue that we have is, in the contract, since you did the last one, you had a contract that didn't have the divocation in it, or have the divocation in this one, which I had for all the third party contractors. Simply because that, that is what your insurance company had asked for. One way, as I said, I expected this to be an issue for once, because he's got a good background with this. We didn't, I, I did have an issue where that might have come up, with previous circumstances. Not anything that I think you would do, but, you know, it would come up as a possibility, then it came to fruition as a problem. But anyway, he said he'd have to change his price that he has in this package if we had to require an application. I leave that up to you. Like I said, I would not be shocked if you did a way through the application, because he's got, we've got sovereign duty to some extent on these types of decisions. And he's got sovereign duty through us as a special magistrate. It's not as much as a third party contractor putting in windows, so.
Park, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, pleasure to be here. Again, I think you all have been provided my statement qualifications and my stated price of in contact, my malpractice carrier, which by policy doesn't exclude, so that would, it does not provide coverage for my quasi-traditional functions as a special magistrate. They did, my agent did say that the underwriter made reference to. They did, my agent did say that the underwriter made reference to a public officer endorsement that would extend the cover of the city at the request of language. And they would quote me that endorsement cost depended upon what the policy, the face policy amount that the city would determine that you want. I requested them earlier today for noon, give me a price of a hundred grand, two fifty, five hundred and a million. And I did not receive a reply before this meeting. So I'm happy to pass on to, to the administration, whatever would be the response coming back to me. And the only thing I would look for, the city to do in excess of the implied side court to perform the magistrate services, is I would just pass on, to treat me the cost of the endorsement to the city and request this. So happy to serve the city in any capacity that I can, appreciate the opportunity. And so the way I see it is, you guys can hear, hold my people fired, get the endorsement, waive it, I'm moving away, that matters, we all.
First of all, thank you for applying. Looking forward to working with you. And do we have any questions before?
No, I just think that we're very fortunate to have somebody like Park Sullivan, five different positions, knowing that you got it before, because you're qualified. Me, I think, aren't the best qualified, I'm sure, by your, not Park. So we're not gonna have to pay for any travel expenses or something like that. And so I know this, the fact that you got experience with the city and plenty of experience in general, that I think is very fortunate to have someone like you apply.
Any other comments?
I'm, I'm sure you booked the contract, so you know you can't be a special magistrate or an officer anywhere else, thanks.
Ready for show?
Thank you. Previous magistrate that we have, have a policy.
We had them, I've been here for just a little while, so they probably have a policy. I'm a special magistrate for the city, I've got a master's course in, I mean, that, yeah.
And I would, I would just, if it depended upon the timing of your need, I'm happy to chase this and bring it back to administration before your next council meeting, I believe, on February fourteenth. So I could have, I should have something within the next couple of days. It is, if I'm sitting up there, if I sit where y'all are, if I can provide the indemnity, if it's not burdensomely expensive, then I want a magistrate to provide it, if that makes sense.
So it's my recommendation that you go ahead and prove the contract you need, special magistrate very badly, and especially ones experienced, at least you hit the ground running. And on the basis of the fact that the city pays the, the cost of that, and obviously, you already evaluate, it's a, you know, it's one of my contract, so. Comes at extraordinary cost, I say, no, we'll make up the identification or you can say, we got one again.
So we could just simply approve it with the ability to add on the identification once we receive the prices from this show, this firm at our next meeting? So we can go ahead and throw it down. Any other questions or comments? You looking for a motion?
I have a motion to go ahead and prove, Park Sullivan, the, our special magistrate.
With the ability to add on the identification at our next meeting? All right, there's the motions, there's a second.
A second?
We have a motion, a second, any further questions or discussion? They know, call a roll.
Councilmember McQuaid?
Yes.
Councilmember McHearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I don't normally say this to third-party contractors, but thank you.
Thank y'all.
Yeah, thank you, Park.
Thanks.
All right. City manager updates. I have one question. I just realized that I've just gotten that from a personal attorney in the past. I don't, if you just seem to pass on your own case, then, then, no. City manager updates. Update FAA, we have not heard back from them for a meeting, surprise the pro. Outside council, David, send another email. He's also a little surprised I haven't heard back from them. We'll let you know at the next meeting, because they both know that you're outside council, it's gonna be a consultant. Good news for us, we're getting close to hiring a in-house IT.
All right.
Yeah, I forgot, it's Mike Bird. Actually, I got a call for me taken by Jeanette from Karen, our new supervisor of elections, saying this guy's a good guy. Well, when David, he thinks he's an IT guy, but he's better than me, but his, you know, could make half heads or tails, whatever, what he's had on it. So I called down to Rob Jordan, who's the IT administrator down at the sheriff's office. And he said, I've heard a guy, but my number-two guy knows good. And he said, this guy's very intelligent in IT, we need to, need to do a interview with him. So Rob came up and sat in and said, yeah, this guy knows what he's talking about, his background. His FBI background just came back clear, so that's good, because we couldn't work on the chief stuff, the smart cop stuff in sheriff's office without it. So we're working him up and more we got on his background, the go, but he's, he's actually, Rick's on, he's doing a SCADA project for down in Sebring right now. So he knows that, SCADA, how would you say it, very, very. So we're, we're pretty excited, gonna get him on board and it's really neat, so that's actually really good news. When is he starting? As soon as we get cleared, he said he just needs two, two weeks so he can finish up the project down in Sebring. He's owned his own company for quite a few years and one of the best things I like, he said, he said, have us be knocking, I have tons of them. He said, someday, he said, my plan here is just, I don't have nothing to do someday, so he's gonna come in, get the job. Great news.
What was the name of the guy you said?
Mike Bird. Matt, Matt.
Matt Bird?
Matt Bird, yeah. BYR.
Hopefully he'll be able to do your website as well, so it's.
PGA company, actually, she's probably, D A J, has already been working on it since day one, so. Robert, Dr. Robert Flores, he's on the, was on the fire pension board. He dropped off a letter, actually, to the mayor. And he said, Mayor Anderson, I want to thank you and Avon Park council members for providing me the opportunity to serve on a fire pension board. I will be retired at the end of January and moving out of Avon Park. Therefore, I will no longer be eligible to serve on the board. Thank you, Dr. Robert Flores. Already, he had, then today should do it tomorrow, then put an opening, so now we have one on the police pension board, one on the fire opening. Use a great service to have to work for that. Oh, yeah. He's on other boards, though. Yeah, so I spoke to our local people overseas, Bird's scooter, to see how things are going, and also bring up a couple of things to them. They're seeing about two hundred rides a week. They said that's right up there with Sebring. They said they were a little surprised. They said, you know, like anyplace they put them in, it's gonna slow down, but we see them zooming all over the place. And that brings me up to heading home from work here last week about six o'clock. And I saw in median at twenty-seven, like, we're not supposed to go past twenty-seven. I turned and looked and they were going right into the Walmart area, so Bird knows about it. And they're gonna try tweaking the geo, because we don't want anybody.
Must be a hole in the fence.
Yeah, it is a whole offense. I don't know if they went under it or over, but they made it, so. The iPads were sent out today, so they'll be here hopefully in a couple of days, or, well, I think it might be a week. That's, I'm sure there's a lot more going on, but like everybody at the city says, they're so busy, getting a little busy, I guess. That's pretty much it. Any questions?
I have a question. Have you heard back from the warden?
Yes, thanks for bringing me that up. See, that's my, I thought, the warden I was gonna have on tonight. He is up in Tallahassee, got a call up there, so he assures me he will be on the next meeting. And if not, we gotta do something, because we need some help out here, but yes, he said he will be on the next meeting.
Any updates with, with all the documents here?
No, we haven't got anybody applied and, and to be honest, I don't think anybody's gonna apply for eighty thousand dollars. We had one that put in here, oh gosh, for Christmas or whatever, and qualified and worked for FDOT. And they tried it all numerous times and never got back. Perhaps for our next, the budgeting cycle, then we could reach out to some of the city and see what they're paying there.
Yep. We didn't have a Zoom call with families. Have there been, like, state of updates or anything, or anybody else?
Has there been anybody else kinda?
Any other legislative updates or?
weren't they supposed to go to Tallahassee last week? Or this week?
With fam?
Yeah. Let them go up there.
Yeah, brother, actually, he, he, he said he was gonna take off during Christmas and take it easy, but he went right back in, so which is good for them. Anything else? All right, I have number fourteen, says our next city council regular meeting is scheduled for Monday, February fourteenth. Be in. Okay. Is that just a update or are there a, you looking for some change there? No, the court, it'd be nice to put it on next to the mayor.
You know what?
So the mayor wouldn't have to look it up.
I can't think of that, that was my.
Well, you know what? Somebody over there was responsible. This is, this is two ladies right here. All right.
Pay attention, man.
That concludes our regularly scheduled agenda. Is there anything else for the good of the city? Questions, comments? Do you know, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing opposition, we're adjourned.